Mr. Bailey.
President.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
President.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Here.
And Jamie Hill.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna let the invocation go and then we'll do the pledge. Reverend McDowell, all right, we're gonna say a prayer first, all right?
First of all, you will notice on this side of the chamber, a wreath that is placed in memory of Chris Karasalis. Chris, a master police officer, and of course, the head of the mayor's security detail. We also want to lift up the name of Brett Wiley. This is Diane Wiley's husband, who died yesterday, the day before yesterday. Mrs. Wiley, a very active member of the chamber, and of course, we want to remember them. And any other family that is within this viewing audience, to remember those persons who are sick, those families that are experiencing death, we want to remember them. For just a moment, if you would, give me a moment of silence. Oh, Lord, with all the things that are happening in the world today, we find ourselves in this place, this place we call the City of Columbia. As we embrace grace in all the increments that are necessary for grace building, we pray for the families that feel loss in their lives. We pray for our friend, Chris, a faithful servant, one who gave of himself. We pray for him as he took care of us, and particularly, the mayor. We pray for Brett Wiley, who suddenly died. And we pray for Ms. Wiley, as she struggles through the annals of death. Bless us. Grace fill us. Touch us with your finger of love, spirit, and your wise provision to move on. Weeping endures for a night, but joy comes in the morning. We ask it, reclaim it, in your name. Amen.
Everybody will stand for the pledge allegiance, please. All right, you gonna start us off? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, my dear.
Let's get back.
What's your name, this way?
What's your name?
You gonna hang out up here? I think we got, we got a new mayor. I'm gonna take the back row. What's really gonna be funny, in about 30 years, we're gonna look back at that picture and she's actually gonna be sitting here. Madam Administrator, and City Manager, Administrator.
Beautiful little girls are, um, got my attention, Mayor. At this time, we will ask for the mayor and city council to adopt our agenda.
I move.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion, changes, questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, we ask for public input. Individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address city council about items on the agenda. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
Mayor, no one has signed up to speak at this time.
All right, we'll continue on.
With the approval of minutes, item number two, councils asked to approve the January 21st, 2025 work session meeting minutes and February 4th.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman, um, Mr. Daniel did sign up to speak regarding item 20, which is a part of the public hearing.
Right, he just rolled in the door, so Mr. Daniel, come on down.
He also signed up to speak on item 26, so he can speak on item 26 at this time, but not item 20.
Okay, just 26, Jim.
I was really gonna wait until you got to him.
Oh, you wanna do them both at the same time? Okay.
I can do them now, you're welcome.
Well, you only can do one of them.
Okay, well, I'd like to respond to both of those items.
Okay.
There's no, for clarity, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Daniel, there's no.
Daniels, don't run off. Jim.
Ms.
Don't run off.
Mr. Mayor, there's not a public hearing at this time on item 26.
26, you can talk about 26 now because there's no public hearing attached to it.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Go back and see what which one it is.
As Mr. Daniel's preparing himself, we will remind the audience that you have three minutes.
The student housing, uh, I'm president of Wheelah Neighborhood Association. One advantage, I agree there's too many of them, and I don't know how they keep finding people, but they do, but at least if you've got them in a complex, they're all together. They got parking. What we're seeing now in our neighborhoods, particularly in Wheelah Hill, we have a new developer in phase two. He's built seven houses, uh, only one of those have been, have four and five bedrooms. Only one is a family, the other six are all studded already in it. There's three more in this construction, not to mention the next phase, which is Phelps Street. So, I look, that one street, the 1600 block of White Street, has the Prados for traffic. It now houses, eight houses, excuse me, not nine houses, six of which is student housing. The same argument with the, uh, the high rises. I'd rather have them in one location than having taken over our neighborhoods. And if you, if you're gonna do anything about the large complexes, you really need to look at our downtown neighborhoods, and they're getting overwhelmed by developers, buying houses, building duplexes, and putting way too many people in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Moving into a period of presentations, item number three, Jamie Hill's Kids Kindness Day proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor.
I'd like to invite the Hills up. I'm going to read the proclamation first.
Turn your mic.
I'm gonna read the proclamation first and then allow y'all, future mayor there, say a few words, and then we'll, we'll present the proclamation. Whereas Jamie Hill, a book author, kindness advocate, and the founder of Kids Kindness Club, and a first grade student who believes that kindness, respect, and good manners can change the world, and it ain't that to honest God's truth, foster more compassion in our society, we gonna put you on the road, honey. We need you to be around and talk to a lot of people. Ms. Hill was born on May 4th, 2018. She is the daughter of Staff Sergeant Gerald Hill and Crystal Hill. Jamie is the granddaughter of retired Major William Patterson and globalized, recognized author, speaker, TV host Angela Carr Patterson. Well, this explains a whole lot. He got a, a whole world behind her that understands about serving. Her paternal grandparents, James and Stephanie Hill, were esteemed athletes and proud veterans of the Army, and Stephanie playing basketball in the UK. And that's the United Kingdom, not Kentucky, so y'all can calm down. I heard some, I heard some groaning out there. The Hill family boasts over 200 combined years of military service across generations in the United States Army, Air Force, including aunts, uncles, and great grandfathers. On her natural, on her maternal side, Jamie descends from a lineage of business owners who have operated in Columbia, South Carolina for over 50 years. First of all, thanking each and every one of these family members, if you're here, please stand up if you served in the military, uh, as part of this family. We appreciate it and thank you for your service, but we also thank you for having Columbia, South Carolina in your heart, in your home for the last 58 years. Jamie excels in basketball, T-ball, soccer, among her many talents. In her free time, she loves reading, spending time with her family, singing, playing board games with her parents on family night, and taking walks with her beloved dogs, Deuce and Boe. Her book, Good Manners, Good People, was written with the goal of helping teach other children by example through her book, founded a club on how to be, be kind and respectful to others so that they can lead by example at home, in school, and in their communities. So therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, the mayor of Columbia, South Carolina, along with all my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do proclaim February 18th, 2025, is Jamie Hill's Kids Kindness Day. Congratulations. The floor is yours, Ms. Hill.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rickaman, city council, and guests. Thank you for this special honor. I am Jamie Hill, and I'm so excited to be here today. Kindness is cool in school. We are kind, we make our schools and communities better. I wrote a book called Good Manners, Good People, to teach kids how to be kind and respectful. Please remember, kindness is cool in school. Thank you again for this honor.
Y'all, y'all wanna join Tyler team? Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I just must say, Jamie has, um, wonderful things to include here, like cellphone etiquette. This is for the grown people, too.
Hey, it's an autograph. This is an autograph.
This is amazing.
And Mayor, I'm told that we can all get a copy of the book on Amazon.
Wonderful.
All right, you hear it, there's at least 500 copies in here gonna be sold tonight, right?
Oh, my gosh, proper introduction.
It's for her college education, don't be shy, order two or three at a time.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Well, Mr. Corey Mitchell, you are going to have to come up, and I don't know if you can top it, Corey, but Corey Mitchell, Multiple Sclerosis Foundation Day proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor, welcome, Corey.
Welcome, Mr. Mitchell. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then I'm gonna turn the floor over to you to say a few words, and, um, thank you for bringing a small crowd with you. I tell you, to, to have these two types of proclamations going just shows what, what a community, we tell all the time, we talk about the story, our community, and that there's a story to be told behind every neighborhood, behind every door, and it's all about people. And that's what makes Columbia so great. And we went to a restaurant opening the other day, and the ownership, they've opened 23 locations across the country. You know what they said? They had the least amount of, of hard time hiring people here, and that everybody they hired had such a, a, a kind soul and heart for hospitality. And I'm like, well, that's what Columbia, South Carolina is, you should have put one here before you put it in Boise, Idaho, but that's a discussion for another day. The Corey Mitchell MS Foundation was founded in early 2020 as a grassroots organization dedicated to enhancing and uplifting multiple sclerosis awareness in Columbia, South Carolina through community engagement, advocacy, and the stewardship of unselfishness. The Mitchell MS Foundation has played a vital role in promoting sustainability practices, multiple sclerosis education, community involvement through incentives such as community back-to-school bashes, multiple sclerosis walks, health fairs, multiple sclerosis scholarship gala, and enhancing awareness and the quality of life of all residents. The Corey Mitchell MS Foundation has successfully launched and maintained the program, the annual CMMs Foundation Extravaganza, which has provided critical funding and resources to numerous local projects that contribute to furthering education on multiple sclerosis and supporting local students. The foundation's efforts to promote awareness and resilience through speaking engagements about MS, community health, advocacy are instrumental in helping Columbia adapt to the challenges posed by multiple sclerosis, while also assisting those in the city that are affected by this illness. The foundation, through its years of work, has transformed numerous lives within Columbia, creating spaces where individuals feel empowered to speak about their experience, foster community spirit, and serve in vital advocates for the awareness of MS. So I hereby, as Daniel J. Rickaman, the mayor of the City of Columbia, along with fellow members of city council, do by here proclaim, March 1, we're getting it early today, Corey Mitchell MS Foundation Day, in recognition of the organization's significant contributes, contributions, excuse me, to our community and its ongoing commitment to enhance awareness, education, and support of those affected by multiple sclerosis. Mr. Mitchell, based on the crowd that's here, and, um, what you've done in our community, I just want to take a minute and stand up and give you our praise and thanks. The floor is yours, sir.
It's a few people in here. First off, I'd like to give an honor to Jesus Christ, my Lord, and Savior, who's the head of my life. Second, my lovely wife, Shana, my kids, Morgan and Mackay. My family and friends, to the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. To my church family, to my coworkers at the City of Columbia Police Department, and last but not least, to all that had a hand in making this day possible. This day is for all those that have endured hardships of multiple sclerosis. It's greatly appreciated, and thank you to Mayor Rickaman and to all the council members, Mr. McDowell Jr., Mr. Brennan, daughter, I don't wanna mess your name up, Bustles, Ms. Herbert, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Bailey. And last but not least, the city mayor, manager, Ms. Teresa, it's great to see you again. Thank y'all.
I've been asked that the Brothers of the Incorporated come up front and take a picture.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Yeah.
Mayor.
That was my, that was my question.
Um, Mr. Corey. Where is his wife? Shaila. Shaila.
Thank you, man.
It's Shaila. Ms. Mitchell, don't leave yet. Ms. Mitchell.
Hey, you got the better half.
Corey's wife. Ms. Mitchell. Yeah. Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell, Corey Mitchell. Corey. Corey, and catch Ms., catch. Mr. Mitchell and his wife, and the two kids. I'm sorry, um, but I had to, to take a point of personal privilege. This couple right here, they're very good friends with my little, well, she's not little, my little cousin Danielle, um, and I have watched this whole process, and I'm very proud of you. And I also want to thank your wife, because I know that she's been, been there for you through thick and thin and with the kids. So, Ms. Mitchell, I just wanted to say congratulations, um, and thank you, Corey. I, I love seeing y'all and the things that you've done. Next time, tell Danielle to come to city council. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make sure.
Mr. Mayor, a matter of personal privilege, I'd just like to recognize Senator Jackson, who's here before us today. He does a lot of work to help the city of Columbia out, so I just want to let the public know that he's here with us today.
Yeah.
Ready, Mr. Mayor? Well, those are certainly two presentations that are hard to beat, but I'm always, and I know city councils as well, really happy to see our University of South Carolina students in the people's house. This is our USC Student Government City Advocacy Committee. I think it is led by Ms. Olivia Smeltzer, and we welcome them to the podium.
Come on down.
Those are two tough acts to follow.
I know y'all will do just fine.
I just wanted to thank you all for your continued efforts and support towards the University of South Carolina and the City of Columbia. We represent the university on a city level advocating for student concerns. We have made Columbia our home away from home, and that is largely thanks to all of you. This year, we focused our advocating efforts on housing, parking, health and well-being, and student success. In regards to housing, students press concern about safety and awareness. We ask that USC dorms be better equipped with sanitation and security measures. We also propose a significant increase in educating students on off-campus housing options, ensuring full transparency with pricing and affordability. In regards to parking, students spoke the most about the scarce amount of parking on and around campus, as well as the increase in parking prices. As a result, we hope for better knowledge shared to students on the parking apps available to navigate transportation options more effectively. In regards to health and well-being, there have been concerns voiced about food deserts and student mental health. In regards to food deserts, we expose expanding the comment routes to include stops at grocery stores, as well as an Instacart student membership to improve students' access to food chains and support local businesses. In terms of mental health, we aim to ensure students have sufficient access to resources and helping Columbia students continue. and helping Columbia students continue to thrive. For student success, many students have expressed difficulty in finding internships that would lead to a career opportunity. With some feeling unsure about staying in Columbia post-graduation, we believe in fostering more partnerships to create and connect students with internships to encourage them to stay in Columbia. This initiative will not only boost student retention, but also strengthen the economy and the city as a whole. Thank you all for taking the time today, and we look forward to seeing how Columbia will continue to grow.
Thank you, Olivia. Olivia is part of our Collegiate Engagement Council, so she's not only engaged at the university level, she's engaged here at the city, helping us make sure that we know about the issues. Dr. Emma Rides and I had an opportunity to meet with all these young folks, and they're all juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, who all give their time to work in the university to provide the information. And they talked about safety. They've shared with us about lighting, call boxes, a whole lot of great information. A lot of it was derived at the university, but also things that the city could take part in to make sure that their time, that they're here in our community is a safe one. But they also wanted the opportunity to learn more about our community, be part of it. And I appreciate y'all all being here. We've got some folks from the Midwest, from the South, from Boston, Chicago, down to Florence, to Columbia. We've got a great crowd that's involved here in this group, and thank y'all for being here. Thank you for what y'all continue to do. And thank you for taking an interest. It's important for us to have a healthy community, and we appreciate y'all being here. Will Council join me for?
Can I just ask a question? I'd love to, okay, so I know that you all are college students, and there's plenty of different options after graduation. I would love to hear one word, one thing that you absolutely love about Columbia, if y'all could go down the line.
I love the community feel. It's a big city, but small-town feel.
It already feels like my second home. I'm from really far away. I'm from Chicago, but the community makes it feel like a second home.
I was going to say exactly what she said, just being a second home away from home.
I really like that there's a lot of stuff to do here. It just seems like it's a never-ending list of.
See, you hear that? A lot of stuff to do here.
Yeah, I would definitely, going off of that, say just the opportunities here in Columbia, being in the capital, and just everything the city does to kind of partner with the university to help that.
I know you said one word, but I'm going to say two. Go Cogs.
I'd probably say just that it's the South in general, because I was born up north, but I was meant for the South.
Oh, I love that.
There's a lot of things to do here, just like opportunities and stuff.
My one word would be spirit. I just love the spirit of Columbia, and it's just filled with so many passionate, hard-working, and kind people.
Moving into our consent agenda items six through seventeen for council's consideration.
Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion, comments? I didn't want to just pull out item six just for people's, we've been talking a lot about looking at how we redevelop smart and with a lot of the empty lots and opportunities across. And we have had the great privilege of going through and putting out an RFP and working with multiple resources to really bring some talented folks to our community that have had great success, truly revitalizing communities and making sure that we're taking care of all segments and helping folks leverage different funding sources so that we can address these issues and that we can make sure that we have a thriving community that fits all sizes and all needs. And with that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into our public hearing and first reading for zoning planning matters, the first item being number eighteen. And we've got our comprehensive plan amendment for reaching Riverbanks Community Mobility Plan. Got Ms. Lee D. Ford here.
Yeah.
Help us.
Hey, how are y'all doing? Glad the room is emptier. So I'm going to be fairly brief. I know we've got some bigger items on the agenda, but if I can remember how to. You know. Is it going to advance? Oh, there we go, sorry. Okay, so this afternoon, talking to you about reaching Riverbanks, this is the result of a regional planning effort by the Central Midlands Council of Governments. The city in Richland County has served as stakeholders in the planning process. And. Just talk to Chad, he'll. It'll take a second. So the study area for the plan is outlined in org, and you can see why Richland County was also a stakeholder, because the city limits are in blue, so it's about fifty-fifty. And just to go over quickly the schedule, the planning effort began with a study of the area's features and housing market data in the fall of 2023. This was followed by a week-long charrette in February and March of 2024. In addition to the presentation, so the Central Midlands Council of Governments were in, so I know Councilman Brennan has heard this version of this presentation several times as a result. The consultant team, led by Tool Design, provided an informational presentation to our planning commission in September and also had another public meeting at that time. And then the city's Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee heard from Tool Design in October of 2024. So if, next slide. Just a brief overview, the plan is built on a framework approach, and I think this is a good thing to highlight, because it's a little different than some of our other area plans have been in the past. They looked at the geographic features, looked at river access, and how folks within the study area could make those interconnected trips instead of focusing on the main corridors throughout the planning area. And in doing so, they looked at street connections, so where you might be able to punch through those neighborhoods and reconnect with one another instead of having to use Bus River, Broad River, or Greystone to get everywhere you need to go within the study area. The plan also focused on a growth strategy. They didn't propose any changes to the land uses proposed in the city or county's comprehensive plan, but really what the focus here is, is to identify areas for growth or conservation and kind of simplify that for the folks in the study area to better understand how the city and the counties' processes aligned. And then the opportunity sites, I think a lot of times we find ourselves with area plans talking about those big parcels for development or that have things on them. And of course, Dutch Square is one of those here, right? And instead of looking at, as past plans, looking at kind of the massing and how you might build out a site without really being able to plan for a site the city doesn't own, this plan really focuses on how do you maintain connectivity through those sites, whether the area stays the same or whether those buildings are broken up or moved around. So, next slide, please. So tonight, we're asking, or the request is that you adopt the resulting plan document from this public planning process as an addendum to the city's comprehensive plan that would thereby recognize the plan as guiding policy document. And of course, both staff and city have recommended approval of this plan, which has already been adopted by the COGS. So again, the recommendations, which focus on existing and potential connections and opportunities, do not propose any changes to future land use or to zoning within the city's policies. Next slide. So you may ask, how would we use this plan if it doesn't provide a whole lot of changes? And I think what's important to note here is that we use adopted plans when reviewing land use and development decisions. We use them when we're considering updates to our long-term plans, like the comprehensive plans, and we look at them when we're looking at infrastructure investments. And because a lot of this plan specifically focuses on transportation infrastructure, we anticipate that our regional, our statewide transportation agencies will also consider this plan's recommendations when planning future infrastructure projects. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Mr. Brennan? Very large plan here, but it's a growing corridor. As we see Malfunction Junction in year three of twenty-eight, I don't know how many years, this area is definitely going to experience growth. Can you please speak to the mindfulness of planning for bike and pedestrian access and transportation as it ties into our riverwalk through this plan?
Sure, so that's with the framework approach, so it's kind of that first component of the river access, but there are a lot of very wide rights-of-way, kind of like downtown, but throughout this area, and that means that there's a lot of room for potential. So we have some recommendations, and I didn't include them in the presentation, but within the plan document, there are some potential build-outs for road rights-of-way that are overdesigned. They don't handle a whole lot of vehicular traffic, but they could handle more multimodal traffic and make it safer for all users to connect back as well.
Great, it's great to know that that's part of the mindful plan. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel? Thank you.
All right.
Everybody signed up to speak? Is there a motion?
So move.
Got a motion and a second to approve? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickerman?
And we will move on to the zoning public hearing portion of this with regard to a zoning map amendment for number nineteen for 2212 Senate Street. This is a request to rezone the property from residential, single-family, small lot, historic preservation overlay, to residential mixed, retaining the historic preservation
That's in the district too. Yes, sir.
Is there anybody to speak for or against this?
No one has signed up, Mayor.
Anybody from the neighborhood have any concerns or questions? No, ma'am? Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickerman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number twenty is a zoning map amendment for 427 Harden Street. The request is to rezone the property from residential mixed district to single-family residential, medium lot district.
We've got the, we've got the wrong.
You give me the clicker, maybe I can get to it.
All right, thank you. There we go, thank you. We have folks signed up to speak on this?
Mr. Daniel.
Jim Daniel. Jim? He's signed up, then you can hop on. We'll put you on right after him, Mr. Ward. Not a problem.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm president of Wheelhouse Neighborhood Association. I have lived in the general vicinity of this house since nineteen seventy-one or so. Anyway, the problem, another problem, this presents a problem that we're seeing in our neighborhoods where people are buying larger lots, splitting them up, and then trying to build various things. Next door to this house is a duplex that was built by a developer who does a lot of stuff in our neighborhood, sort of a tractable construction, but it's a duplex. This is a very large lot. The house is historic. It should qualify for at least three historic, it should qualify for city landmarks, it should qualify for the Bailey Bill, and it's been abandoned for years, and it should qualify for the abandoned tax aid. So the Spagner House and the adjoining house, which was also in the Spagner family, need to be retained. This property needs to be developed as a single-family home and not split into two or three or four different smaller properties like duplexes. So I would hope you would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Toby Ward. I'm an attorney here in Columbia and have the pleasure of practicing in five points not far from this property. I just want to say four things in my two minutes and fifty seconds left. First of all, on the city level, this rezoning violates the two-acre rule because the piece of property to be rezoned is less than two acres, it's three-quarters of an acre. And to prevent spot zoning, the city doesn't rezone tracts that are less than two acres. To justify this unjust result, staff has ingeniously decided to rope this lot in with the zoning across the street, but the zoning on this side of the street is all RM1. And so I don't think that's really a good idea or a good policy for city council. The second thing I want to say is that this proposed rezoning is against both the current comprehensive plan and the future comprehensive plan. All the other zoning up and down that side of the street is mixed use, and this one would go to single-family. And the comprehensive plan and the future plan both call for mixed use at that location. On the state level, this is really spot zoning, and spot zoning is really only supposed to be used to correct injustices that are clearly shown. It's also, I think, if it happens, going to be a regulatory taking, which can have financial consequences for the city. In closing, under my three minutes, what I want to say is this. Zoning, especially in this situation, is not an appropriate tool for historic preservation. This is a lovely old home, but zoning as a tool for historic preservation is a slippery slope, and I would ask council to seriously consider the wisdom of applying it in this situation. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Ward, thank you for coming today.
Yes, sir.
And those light threats, I appreciate that. So with a historic mind to it, how would you save the house without zoning?
Well, a collaborative effort between the owner and the city to find an appropriate buyer within a responsible amount of time, I think, would be a first step. And that is, as Mr. Daniel correctly pointed out, there are tax incentives that are available, and marketing is underway. So I think that's the first thing. The second thing is zoning can't cure all problems. Change is inevitable. If you were going to accomplish this result, you should go down the whole side of that street and make everything RSF II, I think it is, is what was suggested, rather than just picking out one lot and having a tooth missing in the street. You should do the whole street, because there are other lovely and significant homes along that street, and I think that would be a better policy for city council.
Well, I think that's well and good, but we're in a particular situation here where the estate is in charge of this beautiful house. Would you recommend? Would you recommend landmarking it to save it?
Well, that would require that the owner go along with it. And if it's for sale, let the new owner decide that issue. Because, you know, let's cut to the chase. This is about value. If you take the current zoning off the table to preserve the historic house, then you deprive that property of significant value. And again, is that a correct application of your immense zoning authority? And do you want to get into the position of having your constituents ask you to save this house and this house and this house over and over again? And before too long, you don't have a comprehensive plan, you have a hodgepodge.
But just so for clarification, in your opinion, though, if we did the whole stretch, doesn't that take the same thing away from the owner? So I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, is we're saying one thing, but yet we're saying the same thing in a different. I mean, I'm apt to do the whole stretch, to be honest with you, because I think that's an incredible... But for the quality that's there, we're not going to see that in the future. If it was an abandoned lot, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation, but the sense that's there, I think it's worth taking a look at. I'm just curious.
I would have to say that if you did that, I would not be here. I would have nothing to complain about.
Well, it's good to see you anyway, Toby.
Yes. Well, it's a pleasure to be here, and in all candor, that's the problem with the approach that's taken. And so that concludes my remarks. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else signed up?
Yes, Ms. Kaitlin Hayward.
Kaitlin Hayward, I'm the owner of 415 Harden Street. I own the property that shares that property line with 427. Thank you for your time. The rest of my family is getting ready for my nine-year-old's family birthday party at home, but after hearing Mr. Ward's words, I'm glad that I came. If you want to talk about injustice, we bought in 2019 415 Harden Street. It's the Ross McGee House. It's a historic home. It's a flat roof. It's had lots of problems. We signed up for the Bailey Bill. I have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars replacing plaster, replacing roofs. If this property next door turns into mixed use, we're going to lose our investment totally. And what does that say to people who are investing in our neighborhood like me? I have a four-year-old and an eight-year-old. The amount of traffic that would cause on Harden Street would make it impossible for them to really walk in and out of our house onto the sidewalk. And this is, like, I'm a real person. We have really, really, really invested in this house to maintain the historic integrity of it, and we used our life savings to do it. And all of that would be gone. And I'm here to say, if you want to rezone my property, a single-family, I will not contest that. I am here to say, yes, please do it, because that would make this decision easier for you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up?
Did anybody else want to speak on this issue? I know we have a group here from the neighborhood. Well, I will. Mr. -- yes, sir. Just state your name for the record.
My name is Francis Goldstein. I'm Kaitlin Hayward's neighbor. Sorry, my name is Francis Goldstein. I'm Kaitlin Hayward's neighbor, so I am two doors down from this house, this beautiful house, which I would like to see preserved. But I want to also say that if you want to rezone the block, if that's what the law requires, I have absolutely no objections to you rezoning my property as well.
Well, thank you.
I don't know why this zoning is so odd. It's the only place, this little strip of Wales Garden that's zoned for multifamily houses, it's the only place on the map. But we would really cooperate in any way.
Thank you for being here. I don't think anybody else is. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Thank you. I didn't plan to do this. I really don't know what to say other than, if you're in favor of what we're doing here, if you'd stand up or hold your arm up so that council can see. There's a lot of us in favor of this. It makes sense.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I want to entertain a motion from Mr. Brennan.
So moved.
I do want to note that we do have royalty in the House tonight. We have Mary Green, our cheese biscuit queen, in the front row, who's here in support. So I have a motion on the floor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I would like to add, I think, I'd like us to move forward on making the motion to accept this at this, but before we do second, really analyze what Mr. Ward has brought forward. We've got multiple neighbors here who have agreed. Let's look at the stretch. Let's make a wise decision that I feel like will hold up and not set a precedent that we don't want to go down. I mean, obviously, we're all passionate about this house and the way it plays into that neighborhood. I wish I had some spared coins to purchase it. I looked at it online. It is, it's got a lot of potential and really could be a beautiful piece. But I think with that, I think for what we want to do is give it first reading and give us time to figure it out, so at least we can protect it at this point until we can figure out. But I like the concept of what Mr. Ward's brought forward, which I think we need to explore if we can do that.
I do want to say that, I do want to put on the record that obviously we disagree that this is spot zoning, that because it is adjacent, to be spot zoning, it is in and of itself surrounded by some other zoning, so we do not agree that this is spot zoning.
Mr. Mayor, to your point, I'm sorry. Chris, as you bring those suggestions and findings forward, can you educate us? The root of it is we want to save the house, right? And so even if it goes to single-family, is the door open for somebody to come in and demo it to build back a single-family residence? Stuff like that, during this period, from the first reading to second reading, if you could educate the council on that?
Certainly be happy to.
Well, we're going to look at all options, but with that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
No, we're right. I'm fine.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Your next item is number 21, a zoning map amendment for the east side of Bluff Road. This is a request to rezone the property from residential mixed and community activity center corridor to an employment campus. Will facilitate development I think you all are very aware of, the Columbia Empowerment Zone.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item? I'm not seeing or hearing anybody. Is there a motion, Mr. Brennan?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Final item is 22, a zoning map amendment for 1205 Colleton Street with a request to rezone the property from single-family residential to mixed-use district.
Ms. Herbert, is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, Ms. Herbert?
I do see that there are some representatives from the neighborhood here, and I don't know if you all have some questions or whether or not you've been able to talk to Mr. Renato Barron. I don't know if he's here today. Is Mr. Barron here today? So what I would like to do is have the public hearing today and defer the first reading. Is that okay?
It's absolutely fine.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
No one has signed up.
Did you want to say anything? Ms. Singletary, you got to come to the microphone.
You want to hear some information about it?
Karaoke's on every other Tuesday.
I missed it?
Yeah.
Forgive me, I missed it. Thank you for the time. I just would like to get more information on this because I know that's a residential area, and that's sort of in the area that we're concerned about being developed properly for our community. So, you know, we know housing is very important in that community as well, but we want it done right. So I'd like to hear some more information before I...
Thank you.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record, please?
Everybody know me. Excuse me. Gwendolyn, my name is Gwendolyn Singletary.
Thank you.
Wouldn't it be...
So with that...
Do you need that in the form of a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for reading.
No, we're holding...
So my motion is to, we conducted the public hearing today, but we would defer the vote till our next meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
That concludes your zoning public hearing.
And can I ask the College Place Representatives to make sure you get the contact information for the developer before you go?
I'm going to defer the vote. Moving forward with our ordinance's first reading, item 23, ordinance number 2025003, amending ordinance 2023065, granting an encroachment to Gadsden and Green LLC for use of the right-of-the-way areas of 700 Block of Divine Street, the 700 Block...
Motion to approve.
Got a motion? Is there a second? Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 24, ordinance number 2025007, approval for granting an easement to Dominion Energy as South Carolina Inc. along a portion of city-owned property located at 930 Laurel Street and 901 Taylor Street, known as Finley Park and identified in Richland County.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 25, ordinance number 2025011, approval of reservation of easement for the Crane Creek Greenway along a portion of city-owned property identified in Richland County.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into a period of resolutions, item 26, resolution number R2025010, resolving to consider an ordinance amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances, Chapter 17, Unified Development Ordinance, to prohibit private student dormitories in the downtown activity center and mixed commercial districts, the DAC and MC, to update regulations and definitions related thereto and setting and advertising to the public the date of a public hearing on this ordinance and referring ordinance amendments to the Planning Commission for its consideration and invoking the pending ordinance doctrine with respect to this ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Hampton, do you mind coming up and talking through the ordinance and the process, please?
Certainly. I will let the resolution speak for itself, but what it is calling for, that will, the process will be after this, it is an amendment, so a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, the zoning ordinance. And that requires first a Planning Commission review and recommendation, and then a zoning public hearing in front of this body. So it would be in Planning Commission at March 13th and City Council at April 15th. The effect of this amendment would be to remove the permission to construct a private dormitory, not a public dormitory, but a private dormitory in two of our central business districts. The zoning districts are the downtown activity center and the mixed commercial. These two districts generally cover the area known as Assembly Main Street and Sumter, and that area further down, often known by people as Innivista, which runs from colonial life all the way down to the river. So public dormitories would still be permitted in those areas, and it does not prohibit housing in which students live. It prohibits what is called private dormitories. That is the mechanism through which are permitted more than three unrelated people. So a group housing, and that is the heading under which it falls, which is group housing as opposed to single-family where you have duplexes and the such. So it is a limited use type in the downtown area. It would prohibit that use in those two districts.
Any questions for Ms. Hampton? On this, let me say that part of the process, if you listen to what Ms. Hampton said, is that we're going to take this resolution in, which means it's the beginning of a process of conversation, because this will then go for a public hearing to the Planning Commission, who will either accept or deny this and possibly give us recommendations. Then it will come to council for public hearing and two readings. In between then, we plan to have discussions with all interested parties and those out throughout our community. One of the things that we really want to talk about is, when you talk about private dormitories, is five to six bedrooms in these developments and understanding what that is and the effect, not trying to solve a short-term problem, but thinking about it through a long-term lens and how that looks. I want to be very, very clear that this council supports student housing. We support market-rate housing. We support mixed housing. We want a growth throughout our community, especially in our core. But we got to have a discussion about what the future looks like and how it is affected now. And I think this is our great opportunity. By taking this resolution on, it allows us to have real discussions about how that process will look in the future and understanding what that means. Is it three bedrooms? Is it four bedrooms? Is it five bedrooms? Is it six bedrooms? And I think that's what we want to understand, how that's going to affect. And how that's going to affect if you are putting, I think it's done by beds and acreage too, right, Ms. Hampton? Understanding how that affects. So this is the only beginning of a lot of discussion. This could change depending on our input, but I think this is the starting point for us to have those discussions and look at how we support in the future the growth of our students, that we want to continue to grow and work with our six colleges and universities. We also want to make sure we protect the integrity of the community as a whole, and I think this is the perfect time for us to have that discussion. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving into a period of appointments, item 27, the municipal court judges.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Gail Jabber and Carlton Bagley as part-time associate municipal court judges for a two-year term, starting effective March 1, 2025. In addition, I'd like to move that we appoint Wes Kirkland as a substitute part-time associate municipal court judge for a two-year term, effective March 1, 2025 as well.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Ms., Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I believe, well, Judge Kirkland is here. I would allow him, if you wanted, to address council soon.
Podium judge, you're a judge now, you got to go to the podium. It's at the dry cleaners, we'll get it to you shortly.
I really appreciate this. I want to help out a lot in the community, and I understand the courts are kind of clogged up, and I'll do what I can to take care of that.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your willingness to be a judge in the city.
City Council Committee Referrals, Reports, and New Business. Our first item, council is asked to refer the creation of a parental support and accountability court to the Richland County City of Columbia Committee, as requested by the Honorable Tyler D. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
There's been a growing public sentiment regarding curbing youth violence by holding parents accountable, which I think is something that is very meaningful, needs to be part of the discussion. But while we're moving there, I think that we should look at how we can rehabilitate some of these parents so they can become better parents. Sometimes they don't know. The sheriff and Chief Holbrook, as well, have talked about these courses being available, but parents not taking them. So I think it would be good for council to explore the creation of a court, kind of like how we have mental health court and homelessness court, having a court for parent support and accountability, where parents can still be held accountable, but look for how we can better support these parents while we rehabilitate them, bring them back out into the community, and improving the lives of everybody around. So I would like to refer this to Richland County City of Columbia Committee. I've talked with Chief Holbrook, Solicitor Gibson, Sheriff Lyton. They all have indicated a support, along with Chief Judge Brian Jeffrey. So I think it's a good discussion that the public is having. I think we can better serve the community by looking how we can rehabilitate these parents.
Wonderful. I did want to ask if it's possible to maybe even add a little bit more to that? We've had a lot of requests for help for parents who are in domestic violence issues and with the court system. And could we expand this to help provide some more support for those family members who are going through that situation, along with making sure the best interests of the child? There seems to be a gap, and we've heard about it. We've been trying to find the right avenue, and you just opened up the avenue. So if we could add that to that, if that was acceptable, I'd love for us to dig deeper into that and how that could help solve multiple issues. Yes, ma'am?
This is, for my clarification, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Any issues resulting from domestic violence, you said?
Really around the protection of the child and making sure that there's an advocate there that's looking out for the best interest. There seems to be some gaps in the system and, you know, times that the offender actually ends up getting to keep the child. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to provide guidance to those folks that are in that situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Just a comment, this is not a part of the motion, but as we research, I would definitely include family court, because there are some things that we do with truant kids, where we do bring in the parents. So just making sure that it's collaborative, I guess, with the efforts that are already going on.
I'm just expanding.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think...
One of the things, and I just asked the mayor, it was...
I'm sorry.
It would seem to me that either this is an amendment, because you added on, what did you add on just now, Ms. Herbert?
I specifically said that it wasn't a part of the motion, and that as we're doing the research to look into what family court is already doing.
Mr. Mayor, did you add on something?
I asked to expand it.
All right.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Bailey to restate his motion.
That's correct, okay. So I'm clear. We also are going to look into expanding out how we can better support parents who may be going through a domestic violence situation.
Through our court system, yes, sir.
Okay. And I do, you know, I'm okay with that. But currently, usually, just, I'm not trying to put my legal hat on. Anytime there is a parent involved in a domestic violence situation, there will be a parenting plan that family court puts in place for parents to regain custody and visitation with their children. So I don't want to confuse the issues too much. But I do think that looking, I mean, the best interests of the child is what we're looking at while we're looking to support these parents. So I do believe it kind of goes hand in hand. But I just, while we continue to have this discussion with the family court, the prosecutor's office, and all of the stakeholders, we'll explore these things to make sure...
Refine them before going to the committee.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond, can you remind us who is on the Richland County City of Columbia Committee? I don't think we've met in a while.
Well, you, sir, along with Councilwoman Herbert and Councilman Bailey.
Okay. So we do think this is the best home for this? You don't think an ad hoc to specifically bring on interested parties from the county and the city would be...
Well, this committee actually allows for us to bring on and have discussions with the county. And I'm willing to take a leadership role in spearheading that, so you don't have to worry.
Thank you, did we get that on the record? Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk?
Can we get a second on that motion? I know there was a lot of conversation, but thank you.
Got a motion and a second.
All right. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
He might have disappeared.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are there any other referrals or reports?
Any other reports or referrals, council? Seeing none, madam?
That takes us to public input. Mr. Mayor and individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address city council. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
We have anybody signed up?
No, sir.
All right, well, I'll entertain an...
So moved.